Single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go. Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer. And that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed. So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley.
Going to call the meeting to order right now. It's May 25th, 1:30, a regular Nevada County Planning Commission meeting. We will begin with a salute to the flag. Would you all rise and say it with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Milman.
Present.
Commissioner McAtier.
Here.
Commissioner Duncan.
Here.
Commissioner Mastodonado. Chair Greeno. Please note that Commissioner Mastodonado and Chair Greeno are absent. Our previous chair, Laura Duncan, has agreed to chair this meeting today.
Thank you, Shelley. Are there any corrections to the agenda?
No corrections, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next item is public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wants to address the commission on anything not on the agenda today. So you're welcome to come forward. Please state your name and address for the record. And you will have three minutes to share your presentation. The clerk will start the timer once you start speaking. And we don't bite, so you're safe.
Oh, thank you. My name is Mary Clancy. I own two properties, one at 10155 Gold Drive and one at 1048 Adam Avenue. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the project that is happening on Hell's Half Acre, which is on the corner of Rough and Ready Highway and Adam Avenue. I'm trying to speak fast so I can get this all in. Anyway, that was a very prized, treasured piece of property in our community. It was zoned to open space, and it's protected because of the rare formation of volcanic vernal pools and the flora and fauna and the habitat that goes with that. It's rare in the world. So anyway, I've been fortunate enough to live next door to it. I didn't know what it was until I moved in. And over the next 20 years, I came to realize what a beautiful piece of property it is. Again, it was zoned to open space. And on March 15th, PG&E sent those of us who are within 300 feet a letter stating that they were going to be doing some vegetation clearing and a little bit of construction. They didn't go into any detail. Come to find out, after digging, they clear-cut the entire 14 acres of every single tree, no permit. They didn't notify us of what the project consisted of. Since then, we have found out that they're putting in a PIG, which is a gas line where they test the lines, and they're saying it's under the measures of safety measures. However, they are installing this, it could have been anywhere. It didn't have to be at this location. And it's right across the street from a K-8 school. There's going to be gas released at certain times during the operation, and the children are going to have to be either not on-site or inside, but somehow monitored. So I went to the Planning Commission, or Planning, Nevada County Planning, Tyler Barrington. He received a letter from PG&E on February 10th from their legal department, basically telling the county that there's nothing they can, they have no say over what PG&E does to this land. And so he's hands-off, basically. I've approached him about this and explained to him, in our digging, there's no EIR report, there's no storm drain prevention plan. There is actually, they haven't even applied for water with NID. They're going to be housing seven, four to 10 tankers of natural gas on-site that will be able to facilitate 12,000 residential homes. And there's going to be these stacks that burn off the excess gas that are about 40 feet high. There's going to be three to seven of those. I don't know if you've ever been to that location, but this does not fit this location. But because PG&E is immunity utilities, for some reason, they think they can just go in and do whatever they want. I think you know about the incident that happened in San Bruno. I really think that PG&E is rough-shodding. They're just pushing this down our throats. They're saying, we can't do anything. But I'm reaching out to Nevada County and Grass Valley to get some oversight into this program. We have filed, the Red Bud Society has filed a claim with the CPUC. That was four weeks ago. We haven't heard a word. So we are, they're very aggressive in this project. We're not getting any answers. The chief of the fire department has asked for an EIR or any kind of environmental impact report from them. To date, they have not, he has not received anything from them.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that forward.
I'd just like you to know, Mary, that that's in District 3. And I know that Supervisor Swarthout is all over this like a wet shirt, okay? So know that she's on top of this issue because she's concerned about the...
Impact?
Impact and the change, and the clear-cutting that took place.
Yeah. That's the least of our worries at this point.
Yeah.
My name's David Poiree. I live in Mary's, one of her places, 10155 Gold Drive, right adjacent to this debacle. And just here, I've heard more information that's even worse than what I already, you know, what I'm already aware of. And that's the clear-cutting and the disaster they created over there. It's total destruction, looks like a bomb went off or whatever. And fortunately, I ran. I feel sorry for the owners over there because I believe that their resale value's gone down considerably being adjacent to that. I did speak with a few representatives from PG&E, one of them being Chris, I was there and I lost it. Alice, thank you. And he's a land planner, environmental management. He went out there after he heard concerns, and he was like shocked what he saw. He worked for PG&E. And, you know, I don't have a lot to say that hasn't already been said. I would suggest, though, that if you guys are interested in what's going on and concerned about people in your community and homeowners, that if you haven't seen it, go by there. Drive down to the end of Gold Drive where I live. And, you know, I wake up every morning to the sounds of all their equipment out there, and that's what I hear all day. I'm at the beginning of my retirement, and this is what I get to live with. And it's just devastating. They did it so quickly, didn't really communicate with hardly anyone except handing legal documents to our land planner or whatever we call our, the city person that oversees this. Because they said they had concerns, so they just handed them a legal document from their lawyer and said, we're exempt. So we're going to go forward and move forward with this. When I spoke with Chris, he said that there was some communication, miscommunication with this whole thing. And I'm like, how can you miscommunicate what they're doing as far as clear-cutting the whole area? And that's what they did. It would have been really simple for them to leave a barrier of trees and also the native plants, protective plants that were there and stuff like that. And they didn't do any of that. So it's just being, PG&E being PG&E and really pushing themselves on our community and homeowners. And it's disgusting. And I hope that you guys will go by there and see what I'm talking about because it's terrible.
Thank you, David.
Thank you for letting me talk.
Hi there. My name's Laura Lewis, and I live at 10140 Gold Drive. I'm right at the budding up of the property that we're all talking about. I'd like to say that at first, when I got in touch with Don Van Etten, who is the PG&E specialist, outreach specialist for us, he told us that it was probably going to be an area of like 350 feet by 350 feet. And then all of a sudden, it turned out to be where they wiped out all the property. But when the plant society came in and saw that we had, you know, plants that were supposed to be there, that are nowhere else to be had, they stopped part of it. But still, they, when they clear-cutted everything, they left roots and trees and, I mean, the stumps, you know, turned over. And it just looks like hell, to tell you the truth. And now my property, I can see right through to Rough and Ready Highway. I feel like, you know, I'm not safe anymore because at least we had that, all that manzanita and all that pretty stuff gone now that they can see right through to my house. I have no privacy. There is dust. I walked on the property and found that I'm on a well and found that when they were digging down, there is water, big giant pools of water. I have pictures of it. And I'm worried that it was going to be, you know, directly involved with my well because we're not that far apart. And I called Van Etten, the specialist guy, and he said that, he said, well, I'll get to the other people. Well, next thing you know, the next day, they went and totally covered it up. But there was pools that were springs that they must have, you know, dug up at one time. But boy, they covered them up right fast. And also the dust and the noise and everything else, it's pretty bad. And it's just that they, we didn't have any time to do anything. We get that letter on March 15th, and Don Van Etten's phone didn't work for over a week and a half. And that was right when I got ahold of him is when he said, I just got it turned on, you know, a week and a half later. And so there was no time for him to even say, don't do this, or tell, you know, PG&E not to do this. And it was gone. Everything was gone within two days. You know, that's pretty bad. And I know that something, do you have any plans of what this place is supposed to look like or anything like that? Nothing? That's pretty bad. You know, PG&E can just go and ruin people's lives, you know? And privacy and happiness and everything else, and it's okay for them? It's just not right.
Thank you, Laura.
I'm Susan Hennings. I reside at 10190 Adam Avenue. And my property is three houses down from the site. And I'd like to read a little something from the SEC concerning regulations for utility companies. Because PG&E just tells us that they don't have to follow any rules. They can do as they please, and they have no oversight other than through their own in-house. So this is from the SEC. "The utilities' operations are subject to extensive federal, state, and local laws and requirements relating to the protection of the environment and the safety and health of the utilities' personnel and the public. These laws and requirements relate to a broad range of activities, including the remediation of hazardous and radioactive substances, the discharge of pollutants into the air, water, and soil, the reporting and reduction of CO2 and other GHG emissions, the transportation, handling, storage, and disposal of spent nuclear fuel, and the environmental impacts of land use, including endangered species and habitat protection." That's a big one. "The penalties for violation of these laws and requirements can be severe and may include significant fines, damages, and criminal or civil sanctions. These laws and requirements may also require the utility, under certain circumstances, to interrupt or curtail operations. Generally, the utility recovers most of these costs of complying with environmental laws and regulations in the utilities' rates, subject to reasonable review. Environmental costs associated with the cleanup of most sites contain hazardous, that contain hazardous substances are subject to a rate-making mechanism described in some notes that goes further on. A huge issue for me is the danger that this project poses to our neighborhood and the fact that this utility has no oversight. We have no input as a county, as a community, and our hands are tied. There's nothing we can do to them. And that seems not really fair to residents here. And I would like this not to happen anywhere else. I've asked PG&E where else they've built these sites. They say, oh, this is the first one. There aren't any existing sites that are going to do this type of maintenance. They are working on two other sites in Southern California for the same purpose, not located in forested areas. And they're currently bringing in huge pipelines and other pieces of equipment, and they're using the site for storage. That's not going to be part of the project."
Thank you, Laura, or Susan.
Okay. Thank you all.
Madam Chair, I have one question for the staff, if you don't mind. For clarification, Brian, could you just tell me, does PG&E, since they're a utility, do they have some contact with you at all regarding, like this project or any other project that they have on county lands?
Generally, PG&E does not fall under the jurisdiction of the county for work that they do for power lines and undergrounding and above-ground equipment. We did have some initial conversations with PG&E regarding the site, informed them of concerns regarding special status species and that they should go through a CEQA process, but understood that they were regulated by the Public Utilities Commission. I don't know that we, I certainly didn't understand that they were going to clear-cut the entire site. It was supposed to be a small, above-ground kind of equipment pad. But we did recommend that they complete CEQA as we believe they were subject to the Environmental Quality Act.
And so they didn't, and they just sort of went on their merry way? Is that a, so you haven't had any contact with them after your statement regarding CEQA?
Correct. Tyler did have a conversation at some point. I'll defer to Tyler. I'm not sure if this is appropriate since it's not an agendized item.
Tyler, PG&E is a public utility.
Correct.
And they are not subject to county oversight.
Correct.
But there is a process that can be addressed by concerned citizens or entities.
That's my understanding correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have anything more, Terry?
No, I just, I didn't know if you had any communication with PG&E. And now I understand you did, and they still went on their own merry little way.
Which they're legally able to do.
Able to do.
Yes.
I know, I've been in the school business. So, and that's sort of the end of the story at this point. And so these poor people here have, their only recourse would be the, you know, Public Utility Commission or some other entity than that.
Right.
Thank you.
So thank you to everyone who came to share their concerns with us. I think there are remedies that you can follow, and good luck with that. If you have questions, the public comment is over right now. I would suggest that you approach the planning department after the meeting is over, and perhaps they can provide you with some additional guidance. Thank you for coming.
I would say that I'd suggest, I don't know if you're in contact with Supervisor Swarthout, but she's your supervisor in this area, and so I would highly recommend that you chat with her. Supervisor Lisa Swarthout, okay? And pardon? Okay.
Keep records of everything that you've done, document. Thank you. We have a business item in front of us today. It's a public hearing. It's an amendment to the zoning district map for a change of zoning to two contiguous parcels. I have a disclosure to make at this time. The applicant are known to me. However, I feel that I can deliver a fair and impartial decision related to the project. So with that, staff, I'd like to hear from you.
Hello, Planning Commission. My name is David Nicholas, and this project before you today is the McDermott Forest-to-Timberland Production Zone Rezone. What this project is doing is proposing to change the zoning designation of two contiguous parcels from forest to timberland production zone. The current zoning forest already allows for the harvesting of trees and crops, but it has other allowable uses, too, that wouldn't be allowed in TBZ, such as like a community care facility or a social event place. That rezone to TBZ makes it more dedicated strictly to timber production as a more of a commercial operation. One of the reasons why someone may want to do a rezone such as this is for a reduction in taxes, which is discussed later in the presentation. So this, the project sites located approximately seven miles north of California State Highway 20 off of Bowman Lake Road. The property is currently developed with a cabin, a horse corral, and a network of trails. According to the forest management plan that was included with the application, the forest stand is composed primarily of Sierra mixed conifer species. To provide a little bit of a background on this, these parcels, the property was clear-cut in around 1900 and was harvested an unknown number of times in the 20th century. So there is this history of forestry and timberland production on the parcel already. The current landowners purchased the property in 1996 and operated a less than 10% dead, dying, and diseased exemption on 10 acres in 1997. This just allowed them to harvest 10% by volume of those trees, which is an exemption to a timber harvest plan through CAL FIRE. In 2008, the fall fire burned through about 75% of the property with low intensity. And in 2012, the landowner entered into a conservation easement with the Bear Yuba Land Trust. With the stated conservation values of timber productivity, wildlife and plant habitat, and water resources, the applicant... and water resources, the applicant included with their application a letter from the Bay Uba Land Trust. That was an inspection that they performed in June of 2022, showing that the property is in alignment with the conditions of their conservation easement. For property to be zoned from forest into TPZ, or from anything else into TPZ, some different criteria has to be met. Some of that is including a forest management plan, and that forest management plan just verifies that the site can be operated as a timber harvesting operation. So, it has to meet timber stocking standards, there has to be proof of regular commercial harvesting operation, some mechanism for disease and insect control, a thinning and slash disposal program, fire protection program, and an erosion control program. The applicant's forest management plan, which is included as attachment to, meets the requirements for inclusion into the TPZ district. The county code also has another criteria that has to be met for inclusion into TPZ, and that's timber stocking standards. So, there has to be some sort of demonstration that there's that high commercial value of timber on that property. There's actually five different classifications of site productivity, ranging from Site 1, which is the highest, to Site 5, which is the lowest. The forest management plan that was prepared by the Registered Professional Forester determined that this site's Site 2, so moderately high productivity, and it also meets the point counts and the minimum average residual basal area required for that inclusion into TPZ. So, as previously mentioned, there is a benefit to the applicant in terms of tax reduction. County staff consulted with Nevada County Assessor's Office, and it was determined that there would be an estimated $1,684 reduction in the annual property taxes between these two properties due to that TPZ area being evaluated differently than the current zoning. County staff also compared this project to the zoning ordinance, the general plan, and SEQA guidelines. The operation of this would not detract from the ability to grow and harvest timber, which is the intention of that timberland production zone. Also, the different requirements to include the project into TPZ have been met. This project is also consistent with a variety of goals and policies of the forest element of the general plan, including Policy 15.1, which seeks to identify and maintain sustainable timberland and resources, which this project does. Policy 15.4, which recognizes forest land use designations as a major timber-producing land use designation, and this rezon would allow for the continued use of that land for timber production. Policy 15.5, which encourages the use of timberland production zone on lands with significant commercial timber value. Due to this site being the moderately high productivity classification, it does align with that policy. And finally, Policy 15.6 recognizes the benefit of Nevada County's forests and encourages the use of TPZ zoning to provide an efficient and cost-effective means of harvesting and using forest lands. The California Environmental Quality Act has a statutory exemption, which is 15264, which states that local agencies are exempt from the requirement to prepare an EIR or a negative declaration on the adoption of timberland preserve zones. An important thing to consider is that, that doesn't mean there will be no environmental review for this. The applicant will have to work with CAL FIRE to develop a timber harvest plan, and that is an environment document with associated environmental review. Therefore, my recommendations are as followed. The environmental action is to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to find the adoption of the Timberland Production Zone statutorily exempt from SEQA guidelines. And the recommended project action is to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to adopt the attached zoning ordinance to rezon the parcels from forest to TPZ. Thank you for your time. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, David. Any questions for staff about this project?
So, I read through the plan that they had proposed, and it seems like they were working towards sustainable timber harvesting, but I wondered if the TP zone in general, if that designation requires the harvesting to be sustainable?
The zoning district doesn't specifically require the zoning, the forest management to be sustainable. That would partially be evaluated by that timber harvest plan, which would be that environmental document prepared by CAL FIRE before that commercial harvesting of timber could occur. But the applicant does have that forest management plan, where some of those elements of it, such as the reduction in the fire risk, the good forest management techniques to reduce potential for disease or insect infestation among the trees, are all adhered to, which does have a sustainability element to this project.
And did we have the letter from Bay Uba Land Trust in our packet, or that was something that came with the application, but we don't have a copy of?
That is correct. It was included with the application, but it was not made as an attachment to the staff report.
Can you summarize that letter?
Yeah. So, on June, I believe it was June 6 of 2022, a representative of the Bay Uba Land Trust went on a site inspection. They walked the property with the property owners, and they determined that there wasn't any conflict with the stated values of the conservation easement. They had some different photos documenting the different things they saw throughout their inspection, but I could also defer to the project applicant to see if they could provide some additional information of that interaction with the Bay Uba Land Trust.
Yeah, I'd be curious. I mean, it sounds like the easement, the conservation easement will continue, correct?
That is my understanding of it. The rezon wouldn't impact the conservation easement that they have entered into.
Okay. Thanks.
And David, it's not atypical for the entity holding the conservation easement to want to check in with the property owners if they propose to do a project.
I would defer to the project applicant to see what the specific conditions are of that conservation easement, and to see how often that inspection should occur to make sure they're in alignment with it. Some of the interactions that those two entities have would be a little outside of my review of this project.
All right. Thank you. More for you to learn.
Yes.
All right. At this time, we typically hear from the applicant or the applicant's representative if they want to address the commission. There's no requirement to do so, but we certainly would like to put faces to applicants. And there's two seats here. You state your name and address for the record. You can sit. We're very informal. Could you turn your microphone on? I think there's a button down in front of you.
I'm Brent McDermott. My wife and I own the property. I don't really have a presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, particularly regarding the land trust interaction. There were some questions about that I could address if you want. I think that...
That would be great. And your foresters in the audience?
No, my daughter is in the audience.
Your daughter?
So, they do an annual inspection. That's part of the, that's part of the process with the land trust acquiring easements. And the inspection doesn't have so much to do with the forestry goals or the forestry condition as it does development, because what we gave up was a development easement on one parcel. Although, in the conservation plan, we also state our long-term forestry goals, but those are not, I don't think, those are not specified the way Mr. Nichols pointed out that a timber harvest plan would be. They're not particularly specific. They just indicate a long-term goal of restoration of a fire-resistant, late, serial-stage forest.
I just want to say thank you very much for putting it in a conservation easement. That's just great responsibility. Thank you. Our pleasure.
All right. So, would that be the end of your presentation?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Next is the public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. If anyone wanted to state anything about this project, and not seeing anyone rushing up to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to staff. Do you have any additional comments to make?
No, I don't have any additional comments to make.
All right. Thank you. So, commissioners, if you have any other questions, this is the time to raise them or make a motion. And since this is District 5, which is Bill Greeno, who unfortunately cannot be here today, it's up to either of you two to make the motion.
I'll go ahead and motion that we, so, on the environmental action, recommend that the Board of Supervisors find the adoption of the Timberland Preserve Zone statutorily exempt from the requirement to prepare an EIR or NIGDEC pursuant to Section 15264 of the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA guidelines.
I'll second that.
A motion's been made and seconded. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, Chair. Commissioner Milman?
Yes.
Commissioner McAtier?
Yes.
And Chair Duncan?
Yes. Motion carries.
I'd like to further make motion of the project action, the zoning district map amendment, and recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt the attached ordinance, attached, amending the zoning district map, ZDM number 151, to rezon the APN numbers for the two properties from Forest 160 to Timberland Production Zone 160, TPZ 160, based on the findings contained within the ordinance that we were provided.
I'll second that.
Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, Chair. Commissioner Milman?
Yes.
Commissioner McAtier?
Yes.
And Chair Duncan?
Yes. Motion carries. There's a 10-day appeal on the actions taken. No?
Recommendation to the board.
Oh, it's a recommendation. That's right. So, thank you to the McDermott's for coming to us. I know them to be good conservationists.
Thanks for doing that, easement. Just wanted to chime in that I agreed with that, too.
All right. So, in front of us, we have one of my most favorite times, the informational items and ongoing project updates.
So, potentially, our next Planning Commission meeting would be on June 22. We have not finalized that, but tentatively looking at bringing forward some amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding affordable housing, accessory dwelling units, removing barriers to housing, to come into alignment with some recent, over the last couple of years, changes in state law. And so, we're working on some ordinance amendments to be compliant with state law and targeting June 22 for Planning Commission hearing, and it would be a recommendation to the board since it's an ordinance change.
Great. Are there any other projects pending that might be ready by then? I mean, that sounds like really a lot of homework, reviewing the ordinance.
No other, go ahead, Tyler. The only other item that might come that day, and it potentially will be on consent, is the development agreement review for the Harmony Ridge subdivision.
Oh, the annual review?
Annual, right. Annual, correct.
Right. Okay. So, June 22nd?
22nd.
22nd, okay. So, everyone can realize we have a break up until then, unless there's some emergency Is there any follow-up to the last Planning Commission meeting? Any information that this commission should know about?
At this point, we don't have a date for the board meeting. We're still looking at logistics and timing for bringing the project forward, so that's under discussion internally, and then with the applicant on how they want to proceed. So, at this time, no dates have been identified, but with the assumption that it will be moved to the board at some point.
All right. And that was mentioned as the earliest would be August. Is that still the target date?
Yeah, that is, it will not be June or July. It potentially could be August, but that's still to be determined. But yes, it will not be earlier than August.
Great. Does staff have any questions? I mean, commissioners have any questions for staff at this point?
I just want to comment that I was a detractor of the meeting being held here, and I want to tell you how, what a fine job the staff did in managing this three-ring circus, which truly was a three-ring circus. And I take back my comments that you couldn't pull it off here, and you did. So, thank you very much.
Yes. It was well done. I do have a question. In the news recently, Governor Newsom mentioned changes to SEQA. Any updates for us in terms of what we might expect coming down the pike here?
Commissioners, I don't, I've heard that for many years, unfortunately. A lot of SEQA reform bills have come and gone. I don't know the details of the governor's latest ideas on any type of SEQA reform. I'll have to research that and keep you posted, but at this time, I'm not aware of any significant or detailed plans on what that might look like for modifications to our SEQA requirements.
Right. From his speech, it sounded like there might be some more business-friendly types of capabilities.
We will keep our eye out for that. That would be helpful in a lot of ways.
Okay. Thank you. If no one has anything further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. That's it. Turn off the...